Welcome. This is the February 8th, 2023, meeting of the Berlin zoning board of appeals. Let's see, it is being held by a Zoom webinar. Panelists and attendees are advised that their image, voice, and telephone number may be recorded for the record. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Let me introduce the members of the board. This is a formal thing, folks. As I call your name, please raise your hand.
That's killer.
I mean, Pat Jackson, Ginny Zakatinsky, and I don't, oh, here's Dennis.
Yes, Danny.
I don't see Susanna and Leanne Leahy, administrative assistants, the inspection and land use boards. Danny's not calling in. He's trying to dial in, right?
Yeah, which I don't get because he said he had no computer. But it didn't come up as a phone number. It came up as his name, so. As to unmute.
Danny, we see you as muted. If you can hear us, would you unmute yourself, please?
That doesn't look like Danny.
Hi.
Oh, that's much better.
No computer.
And I'll introduce, I'll introduce Jenny Batlett and Lynn Ryan. Okay, we have an agenda. Approve the past meeting minutes. That would be for January 11. Would anyone say?
Yep, so moved.
I was second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'll do my roll call. Jim?
Hi.
Ginny? Ginny?
Oh, I thought you said Denny. Hi.
And Pat?
Hi.
And Danny?
Hi.
Okay, we have minutes. Do we have any warrants to consider, Danny?
No.
Okay. Any communications received?
Nothing for me.
I'll let you know, Lynn, that Mr. Urrati for 275 Central Street asked for an updated letter from the building commissioner, so I received that. And he does intend to be ready to file tonight with Eloise.
Okay. So that takes care. Also, 100 Carter Street, is everybody aware of that?
No.
I'm not.
Okay.
I sent out, I sent it out to everybody, but.
You just had to re-enlighten me. I'm sure you did.
100 Carter Street, and it took me a while to do this. It was rather painful because it's rather, I think this is a seven-page petition. 100 Carter Street is behind your former property on West Street, Ginny. It's that building, the big building in back of you across from Beards and the town barn.
That's Spalding.
It was, it was Spalding.
It still, it still is. It's, they do sprinkler systems.
Yeah, he's a pipe fitter out of there.
Did they start breakfast there for a while?
Yeah.
Danny's, yeah.
Okay, I know what you're talking about already.
Okay, well, it's owned right now by Alan Roseberry, son of Al Roseberry, the plumbing inspector. And he's, he's filed for a special permit for an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure, a variance from this building size as it relates to the lot size and a site plan. So you can be taking a look at that. Have you sent the hearing notice to them yet?
I did not because you wanted me to hold it until after you spoke with the building commissioner.
And I, I did today. I put 7:30. I don't know if we want to make that 7 o'clock.
Yeah, it's just a matter of if you want to do administrative stuff first or if you want to start with the hearing.
Well, if we're going to have two hearings, I suggest we do the administrative stuff at 7. Start the hearings at 7:30 and we'll make the second one at 8 o'clock, even though it probably won't go off at 8 o'clock.
There are hard copies of the application for 100 Carter Street at town offices. Jim got one, Lynn got one, Ginny, Pat, and Danny. I left one for you, so right above the locked mailboxes in that black bin. They're up there if you would like a hard copy.
Oh, thank you.
Because it'll be helpful because it's, it's kind of a big plan and when you get it online, it's not big enough. What was I going to say about 100 Carter something, but it escapes me now. Oh, Jim helped me and double-checked my work. There have been three sets of hearings on this particular piece of property when it did belong to Spalding. I think it was, what, 1985 and 1995, Jim?
Yeah, there's two in 1985, one to originally build the building and then a second one to put a accessory dwelling unit apartment addition onto the building. Those are both in 1985, and then there was an additional hearing in 1995.
How do you know what it was for, Jim? Because we couldn't find them.
I'm good. I could tell by the, I went through the building commissioner's stack of building permits and I could match up what they applied for back in 1985 to the hearings, hearing numbers that they had.
Okay, I did send a note to, we looked in the registry of deeds and it doesn't appear that the decisions were recorded. So we had, Jim took a look in the ZBA files. There's nothing in there. In fact, there's not a lot in there to begin with, right, Jim? And I sent a note to Ally and asked her if she had copies of the decision. Susanna, are you dancing? Okay. So hopefully we'll have copies. What I'm going to do, Leanne, is ask you if we do get from the town clerk copies of those decisions, that perhaps you could scan them and send them to us. Okay. And also, rumor has it that 275 Central Street, the old Taylor property there at the junction of 495, they may have purchased land on Taylor Road and it looks like they're coming back. I don't know if they'll file tonight. If they don't, they'll go out to April, but it looks like they're going to come back to us or he's going to come back to us.
That's Mr. Urrati, right?
Yes, he does expect to file tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll have two hearings next time. And unless you object, we'll do them for 7:30 and 8 o'clock.
That's fine for me.
I wanted to ask Susanna, the planning board has a meeting on Valentine's Day. Would you be able to attend?
I can try. What time is it?
Well, they meet at 7, don't they?
7:30.
7:30.
Okay, yeah, I think I can do that.
Okay. One of the other things I was considering is, I don't know how and so forth they meet, but maybe we ought to among ourselves, while they haven't given us liaisons, it might not be bad. We, we have a liaison to conservation. We have a liaison, although he hasn't fully embraced it. And Tim Wheeler for the planning board and Susanna and I try to attend their meetings when we can. And then the other would be the Board of Health. So if anybody's interested in being our liaison to the Board of Health and attending some of their meetings, that would be good. We have Chris Keefe from the Select Board, who is our liaison. And also, the Zoom, whole idea of Zoom is running out in March. So I think it's the 23rd or something.
Yeah, it's some odd number. I don't remember. But it's not like the end of the month, the 31st. It's some random number.
It's possible that they may extend or make permanent this, but right now I don't see that happening before March 23rd. So it looks like our April meeting will be in person. Oh, CPTC. I looked out on their website this morning. This is the Central, Massachusetts Central Planning, Planners Training Collaborative. And they're having their annual meeting March 18, which strangely enough, there is, it says information to come, but there's no way to even register for that. So I was going to ask Tim Wheeler about that and see what the scoop is. Because those of you, I know, Susanna, you and I have gotten a lot out of it. Who else has gone to one of those?
I've been to a couple.
I've been.
Yeah.
They did say. Yeah, they said you could register the middle of this month.
Well, they're getting down close.
Yeah.
I get nervous when the phone rings down here because other than you guys, not a lot of people have the number. Is there anything, let's see.
Lynn?
Yes.
Annual report was due on January 31st, so I don't know if you've had that written.
Well, I'm gonna, were you gonna send me a spreadsheet of what we did this year?
Yeah, I did that a while back. You want me to resend it?
Yeah, you have to keep on me.
Yeah, we spoke about this before last month's meeting and I, I sent you, yeah, I'll find that and resend it.
Oh, God love you, Leanne. You, you keep me honest.
All right.
How about your availability, folks, for the March 8th meeting? Is anybody not available?
It's possible I won't be.
I might not. Wait a minute.
Suzanne, I might need you to open up the meeting and I can get my notes from it being recorded, but I might need you to open it soon.
Sure thing. Just remind me, please.
I will. I'll try to.
Thank you.
Okay, so Leanne might not be there. Jim, Ginny, Pat, Danny, you're all available. And Susanna?
Yep.
Does it look, it looks like we'll have two possibly, possibly three hearings.
Two hearings. One, possibly two. Unless something else comes in tonight that I'm not aware of.
Not unheard of. Does anybody have anything else?
I watched one of those seminars, the videos from CPTC on 5G wireless. And it's, it seems like it's very involved and there's, because it's federal, there's a lot of time constraints from when they file to when the town has to approve it. I haven't looked at our bylaws to see what it says, but if we don't have a committee that reviews it between us and the planning board, we probably should. Something to bring up with planning board, I guess.
Yeah, that would be good if you do go to their next meeting to mention that. Call for, does it call for a combination of the ZBA and the planning board or, I mean, what does the?
It, it didn't say anything. They were more talking about knowing what our regulations should be, what we want for the town for these 5G because they have, they, a lot of times go on to existing streetlights. If the streetlights are big enough, there's suitcase-sized boxes at the base of it. And it gets more involved with, once you let, say, Verizon in, then you have to let Sprint in and they can be on the same ones. Now you've got a whole stack of suitcases at the base of your streetlight. And other than that, it was talking about, I think you have 10 days or 30 days from the time they submit to getting back to them, or it's an automatic grant of the permit to put in a 5G, what do they call them? Small cell or something like that? But it's, it's something you want to listen to when you're taking a long drive somewhere because it's about two hours long and very involved.
Did you find there was multiple media there? There was like a PowerPoint and stuff too. Did you have a chance to look at that?
When I wasn't driving, yeah. So, because it was, it was a video, so I was listening to the video while I was driving. But yes, they had slideshows. You can download the PowerPoint as just the slides if you want to look at them without listening to what's going on, just to have reference. And they also, I think they had a case study for Burlington for the 5G. And there was also a link to last tree something.org and then some health issues because there's a lot of concerns about climate, health, and environment with the, with the small towers.
I think what's being put up or is proposed in town by Verizon wouldn't be attached to telephone poles. I think it would be out in the boondocks. What is it? Snake Hill or whatever?
Yeah, but that's, I don't think that's 5G.
Oh, okay. Well, if you would be our go-to person for telecommunications towers and mention it to the planning board. I'm, hopefully they may have something on the 18th of March. Danny, could we trouble you to check with the powers that be and see where we stand with Verizon and Snake Hill or whatever?
I know I was talking to somebody and they were going to try, because the town owns a piece of property up there, I believe, on Snake Hill, and they were going to try and get something put up there. I can go back to who mentioned it.
Yeah, that would be good for our next meeting if you could see what the status of that is, if it looks like it's going forward or if it looks like it's dead in the water.
I'll just point out that we do have in the town bylaw, the zoning bylaw, we do have a whole section on telecommunications facilities that covers antenna towers and whatnot in it.
Yeah, and in the past, what we've done, I, I think they have attached to them is required them to provide telecommunications for the local emergency systems. So I don't think that's an issue. If they do something up on Snake Hill or Snake Mountain or whatever it is.
Snake Hill.
Snake, yeah. Snakes and frogs and, um, anything else, folks? How are we doing with the database? Are you ladies all set with that?
Might as well talk about that tonight, too. We need to set up times with, unfortunately, you, Leanne. I think we're going to have to bother you first, right? And I know we went over this before, what you wanted, Lynn?
Yeah.
I've got notes on it somewhere. I think you do too, right, Ginny?
Yes.
Notes on what you want.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. And Keith is gonna put it all together, right?
Yeah, I contacted and I guess James in the town clerk's office is going to, you know how it only goes through like 2019? And really, you guys were going to start and work backwards from the most recent to the oldest.
Okay, yeah.
He was going to extract 2019, 20, 21, and 22. Okay. The starting in 23. Leanne's going to keep a separate spreadsheet that we can add in afterwards, right, Leanne?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
You meant someone, Ginny, you mentioned, should we have to do something with Eloise? Or is that Jim that's going to be doing that?
I, I think either.
So is that what we need?
I think, Lynn, what you mentioned was the date that the board would have approved the permit would be a different date that it would have been filed with Eloise.
Right.
Finalized, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that has to come from the decision that's signed by Eloise.
Yeah.
Because she signs it 20 days out after she receives it. And you can't really project the date she receives it because they're only there on Tuesday, Wednesday night, and Thursday. So, you know, it's possible that you look at it and you say, okay, we approved it on January 3rd, okay? But it may not have been filed with the town clerk until, or she may not report it as being received until the 5th. And then she puts another paper on the end of it that says that they.
I think it says something like the FPL period has been satisfied.
Right, and that's, that's the date we're looking for, is the date she finalized it.
Finally, yes.
And then we go out five years from that date. If in fact, it's a dated, if it has an expiration date, that's one of the things we're interested in. Does it expire? Now, Leanne, you only have certain ones basically from when you took over, right?
Yes, Jim will attest to the, the files prior to when I, or I should say not, prior to Julie, because once the position was created, Julie kept good files and I've kept good files, but anything prior to that is just, it's, it's hard to find stuff.
And what year?
And it's not complete by any means. Jim, Jim can attest to this.
And what date, what year are we talking about?
Well, for instance, like 1985, there's just a yellow piece of legal sized paper that says 1985. And it's just any hearing that took place within that year that they said saved any notes on. So there's no decisions. There's no meeting minutes. There's no, so to find something, so we tried to find the decisions for 100 Carter and Jim pulled out the folder that said 1985 and there was nothing in there pertaining to that. So I file by street address. So, and some things are filed by the petitioner's name. Some things are filed by the number that Eloise assigns to the petition. Some of it just says 1985 and it's randomly whatever is in that folder, so it's, it's very hard to find anything prior to 2014.
Yeah, there's some folders that are labeled. There's some folders that are labeled by the project name. So, for example, Riverview has a bunch of folders in there that, you know, are labeled Riverview and no telling, there's, there's probably 40 folders for them spanning numerous years, but it's all lumped in together.
I would suggest you ladies might want to start with the town clerk. And first, find out how she files things. I think she probably files them by the number she uses, but I don't know that, okay? I think, you know, if it's 2023-03, that that's how she would file them. That may be your best source, but it's also going to limit availability of those files. And it's also going to take the cooperation of the town clerk. I'm not sure. I mean, she doesn't have to do this, but I think we want it done and I think they want it done too, so that we'll have something we can go back to. I know the building inspector wants it. But anyway, I think maybe if you go in, now she's usually, there's office hours for the town clerk. What is it like, 10 to 2 on Tuesday and Thursday?
It's either 10 to 2 or 11 to 2 on Tuesday, Thursday, and then Wednesday evening, 7 to 9.
So maybe you could go in sometime before we get too close to town meeting. And she gets kind of busy. I think she's kind of wrapping up the census.
Well, is Jim, does Jim work in there, Wheeler?
Yes.
He likes James.
He does. All right, James, James Wheeler. Does he work the same hour as she does?
Generally speaking, but not as many.
Okay, so yeah, they post 11 to 2 on Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday night, 7 to 9.
I'm busy those days. I'm kidding, okay. 7 to 9, Wednesday nights. Okay. Okay.
But I think.
We'll send her an email, see what's good.
Well, I think, you know, in person is kind of good.
Or maybe I'll give her a fair warning. Yeah.
And, and just tell her what you try and say, how can we do this in the least intrusive way?
Yeah, no kidding. How can we not bother you at the same time?
Right. Interrupt what you're doing, okay? So yeah, that would be great because anything you do between now and June, that'll affect you in November, correct?
Well, effectively.
Well, you'll turn in time sheets for the time you put in.
Okay, that's, that's, that stuff.
And then you'll have to remember, we got to refile the next year. It goes the fiscal year. Okay, that's good. It sounds like that's underway. And like I say, James, I'm not pushing him. He had said something about he thought he could get that information. And like I say, James, I'm not pushing him. He had said something about he thought he could get that information by yesterday. I haven't seen it yet. But if you start backwards, if that's possible, if they're filed by the town clerk's number. You want to go, we're looking to go back at least to the year two thousand. And it'd be most interesting to see when we have an in-law apartment that doesn't have an expiration date or a contractor's yard or home-based contracting business that doesn't have a yard. You know, it doesn't have an expiration date. I think it's gonna be somewhere in the high nineteen nineties or two thousand, but I could be wrong. Do you remember, Danny, how long we've been doing that?
Contractors' yards?
No, putting an expiration date on.
Well, as soon as I came on, and I can't remember when I came on.
Oh, you, you don't know when we should be celebrating your anniversary?
I, I know, like, Roger Wheeler and Skip. Those were long-term or they just never had a end date. And like the ones we did on River Road, they should be on a five-year plan. And so forth. It's the ones that were doing business in the sixties that I believe do not have a end date.
Yeah, the other thing is after we, and we're just gonna go with what's on the petition, but I noticed that some, when they did this, like for the in-law apartments, I'm trying to look in the bylaw. Doesn't it say something about they have five years if they were grandfathered or something? Or am I dreaming?
No, you're right, because that's why the, the one for thirty-two and thirty-four, Autumn Ridge, if you'll remember, the reason they had to come was because something about, I think it was twenty nineteen, if, if at that point you'd have to come five years from twenty nineteen, so. So that's what made them have to come for a special permit, even though they already had the apartment.
Let me see, this is page body. I'm just gonna look and see what it says, like on the in-law apartment. I don't know.
So section five sixteen says, unless an earlier expiration date is specified by the ZBA in a special permit, all special permits issued under this section shall expire automatically upon the expiration of five years from the date of issuance. Prior to expiration, applicant may apply for renewal. Special permit for another five years.
Yeah, but I thought there was. Well, I'll have to look. I don't want to take the time here now for you guys, but I thought there was something in there that basically said if you were an in-law apartment and you were prior to that date, you had five years to.
Yeah, that's chapter, paragraph five fifteen. An in-law apartment, which was in existence on May first, twenty seventeen, and which meets the criteria outlined above, will have a period of five years from the adoption of this section in which to receive a special permit.
Okay. Well, that tells us that you guys are gonna have to go back to seventeen at least, because that's when the bylaw must have been instituted. But I also know that we limited some. Susanna and I, and she's disappeared. Susanna and I had gone to a, a meeting, and this is when Emerson Chandler was chair. And we kept after him and after him and told him we could put five-year limits on this, and then these folks would have to come back. And again, it was from one of the CPTC classes. And in some instances he bought us, in other instances he didn't. So there may be a few before then, but that, that's gonna be what about a contract, contract, home-based contracting? On page.
Home-based contracting business, forty-five. Yeah, so chapter, paragraph five forty dot nine.
Yeah.
For a home-based contracting business, unless an earlier expiration date is specified by the ZBA in a special permit. All special permits issued under this bylaw shall expire automatically upon the expiration of five years from the date of issuance.
There's a bunch of expired permits out there.
There certainly is.
Okay, well, I.
Volunteer to come forward to say my special permit has expired. Could I get it renewed?
Yeah. Unless an earlier expiration date is specified. It doesn't say anything about if the applicant files a completed application for renewal. I would say they're all in jeopardy if they haven't applied for a special permit. But.
Yep.
That's for another time, because if we were to raise the flag on this right now, we would be meeting every night of every week of every day for two years.
You think, yes. Not gonna happen.
Well, we'll see. I, I think that the reason the planning board finally instituted this was because the building inspector really didn't have a major way of controlling.
Well, there hasn't been one that came, yeah, there hasn't been one that's come back since I've been on the board.
Right, and there are some that have expired even though they were under this new bylaw.
Which they would have from Jeannie on, yeah, none of them have.
So that'll be up to the building inspector.
Be some cranky phone calls.
Yeah, I don't know if he'll end up going by years or whatever, or if he wants to tackle this. But think about the number of permits that are out there. Well, there aren't really all that many. I mean.
There's a few.
Yeah, we might have fifty of them out there. And maybe twenty of the fifty are under the new bylaw and will be picked up in this database. But the rest of them are in violation because the permit they got said they expire. Danny, we have five hundred dollars still to spend before July first, do we not?
Hang on, I'll get my book.
How much are the classes?
Well, if you take the classes online, which they offer some, they're twenty dollars. The last time I took a class or went to the annual meeting at Holy Cross, it was like seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, we all went.
Yes, and then we just turn in and get the money back. But I think there's plenty of money in there for anybody that wants to go, because I don't think we've expended it for anything else.
Not enough time in the day.
Is Keith traveling? Do you know, Leanne, is that it?
He is, he is not. I guess he just has a really long, busy day tomorrow, and since there were no hearings tonight, he opted to pass and plans on being here next month.
If there was a night to pass this, I suppose would, would have been a good one. Pat and Jenny, are you busy this time of year with the horses, or is this kind of your downtime?
No, we're busy with a bunch of things.
We're busier with hounds than we are horses right now.
I don't believe we've spent anything so far.
Right, so we got five hundred dollars in there?
Correct.
Okay. So there's plenty of money for anybody, even if there's some online classes that you can take too, if any, take your fancy, please do so. Pay the twenty dollars and get the money back. Okay, does anybody have anything else, or do you think it's reasonable for us to adjourn?
Lynn, I just want to let you know that Louise Janda is from Conservation Commission is attending.
Okay, do you want to promote her and see if she has anything to, she wants to discuss with us?
Doesn't seem to want to move up. Oh, she declined to, she might not be there, because this happened earlier with Jenny. She stepped away. I tried to move her up and it said that she declined.
Okay, well, I think that's.
She may not be, actually be there.
Okay. If nobody has anything else, I'll be glad to entertain a motion for us to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, before I take a vote, Danny, would you thank your technical support for bringing you on board this evening?
Left me stranded here.
Uh, Jim. We're voting.
Yeah, yes.
Jenny.
Aye.
Pat. Danny.
Aye.
And I'm an aye.